Is here. I have not seen Mr. Williams. Is he on? And Ms. Gibson, can you hear us?
I can.
Ah, alright, we can hear you. Good, good.
Judith.
Anybody heard anything from Mike Williams?
Has joined the meeting.
Alright, well, uh, I'll give him one more minute.
Alright, how do I chat? Oh, here we go.
If he's like me, I clicked on the most recent Webex invitation, which was for our next council meeting, the first one in October. Took me a few seconds to figure out what I was doing wrong, so maybe Mike's in the same spot.
Yeah, he might be.
Yeah, he's trying to get on. I'm texting him right now.
Okay.
Got a lot of problems on the board of works of not being able to hear and getting knocked off, so...
Well, we'll give him a second here. Patrick Denart. Well, I just still don't see Mr. Williams. So, we will go ahead and get started. So, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, September the 21st, and, uh, this evening I'm going to, uh, open our meeting in prayer. So, if you'd bow your heads, please. Dear God, we do thank you for your mercy and your grace. We just pray, Father, that you would give us wisdom this evening, where we have many things before us. We pray, Lord, that you would just, uh, help us, Father, to make wise decisions. I praise for each of the council. Or to pray that we would take a look at things, uh, with an open mind, yet, Father, that we would do what is right for our city. We thank you for our, uh, mayor, Lord, and for our police department and the fire departments and the jobs that they do. God, I just pray that you'd protect them and keep them safe. And, Father, I just pray that you'd watch over proceedings this evening. In Christ's name, I pray. Amen. Alright, roll call.
Bates.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Dine.
Here.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Present.
Pendleton.
Here.
Will.
Alright, we do have a quorum, and all of you should have received copies of the minutes from our regular meeting of September the 9th. Uh, do you have a motion?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Dine, second by Mr. Lexi. Uh, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call on the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi says aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
And I'm sorry, I don't know if Mike Williams was on and I just didn't hear him, or if he actually isn't on the call. I'm sorry.
I do not believe he's on, uh, here at the meeting, so...
Okay.
Alright, uh, minutes are approved on a vote of eight to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
Should have seen the posting on the SharePoint of the I-DAM Semi Monthly and also the litigation report, and so, if you have any questions about those, please contact me and we'll gladly answer them.
Alright, thank you. Anything from the controller at this point?
Uh, not till later tonight.
Alright, and, uh, any other committee or board reports? RDC has not met since our last meeting. Alright, I believe there are no special reports. Uh, at this time, we set aside an opportunity for members of the audience to address items that are on the agenda, and, uh, just, uh, so everyone is clear, uh, when the items come up on the agenda, members of the audience will not have an opportunity to speak. So, if, uh, there's something on the agenda you would like to address, now would be the time. Notice there are, uh, time limits of five minutes per individual and 20 minutes per topic. So, if you're here tonight and wish to address something on the agenda, uh, please speak up.
Mr. President.
Please state your name and address for the record, please. Yes?
Mr. President, this is Daniel Johnston, City Engineer.
Yes.
I just wanted to make a few comments tonight in support of ordinance 20-23. That's the, uh, proposed rezone of the 98 acres at the southeast corner of Allen Road and Collins Road.
Alright.
Uh, just a couple of items that I wanted to note, uh, and I think it was one of the reasons that the petitioner requested to postpone from the prior meeting was so their traffic engineer could relook at the, uh, proposed improvements that they are evaluating, assess- assessing it in the overall area, uh, related to the other developments, as well as this, this new potential rezoning. For the, the petitioner's committing to provide road improvements in the area, for example, the Graham Road improvements, uh, associated with this particular rezone, would be, uh, milling and resurfacing of Graham Road from Allen going north, uh, towards Main Street. Uh, there's also been discussions of improving Allen Road from Graham Road towards the, uh, project site, and all those, uh, improvements would be designed and coordinated, uh, with city staff. Now, those, those two items are associated with this particular development, but I also wanted to, uh, highlight or refresh the council on some of the other, uh, road, similar road improvements that the petitioner has either, uh, in the process of right now, construction phase, or in the process, design phase, other road improvements in the overall area east of I-65. Uh, just kind of rattle off some of these. Uh, the intersection of Grain, uh, Graham and Main, excuse me, uh, Graham Road will actually be widened to have two northbound left turn lanes. Uh, that's based on the future truck projections, uh, that, uh, the traffic engineer has, uh, been evaluating. Uh, also, Allen Road, uh, at the Graham Road, uh, three-way intersection, uh, will receive a dedicated left turn lane and a dedicated right turn lane. I think that will improve, uh, traffic flow there. Uh, Collins Road, currently under construction, it will actually be improved from what it previously was, just an old narrow county road. It'll now have, uh, 12-foot lanes and four-foot paved shoulders in that area. Uh, the intersection of Collins Road and Graham Road will actually receive a traffic signal. I think that'll help, uh, with the future traffic movements in that area as well. And then, the last one that I wanted to point out was at the intersection of Collins Road and Worst- Worstville Road. Uh, then, the northbound and southbound lanes will actually be shifted slightly so that, uh, a dedicated southbound, uh, right turn lane, uh, could be constructed and installed. That will certainly, uh, allow-
Has joined the meeting.
-allow for easier access to the I-65, uh, to the interstate from, uh, all of those businesses and industrial area. And I just wanted to, uh, voice my support for that, that ordinance for that reason.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Johnston. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Uh, Mr. President?
Yeah?
Uh, yes.
This is, this is, uh, Dale Davis, Planning Director. I also would like to, uh, speak in favor of the Allen and Collins rezone. Um, I know there's been a lot of conversations regarding the most appropriate land use for this, uh, property, and there's been a lot of conversation, uh, circulating about, uh, it being a multifamily product. If you look at most of our multifamily developments around the city, they range from five to 12 acres, and we're talking about 98 acres. Uh, we don't have the infrastructure to support apartments on this, this whole tract of land. If anything, they would be a supplemental use, but the bulk of the property would, would remain. Um, this is consistent with the other development that has, uh, occurred in the area, and the developer has proposed, uh, landscaping and screening above and beyond what, what we would typically require. So, this seems to be the best fit for the piece of land, uh, that we have available. So, just wanted to speak in favor. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against, uh, something that's on the agenda?
Yes, uh, Mr. President.
Matthew Villanueva, the Assistant Chief.
Yes.
I would just like to, um, say, or, or give our support to ordinance number 20-25. It's something that we feel is very important for the police department. Uh, currently, we're down 11 full-time officers. Came with the, uh, current coronavirus limitations with the police academy. Uh, we really feel this is one of the only ways we're going to be able to come up to full staff within the following year is through the lateral transfer process. We feel this is very important for the police department. It's very important for our staffing, and we don't think that if, if we aren't able to have a lateral transfer process next year, we probably aren't going to be able to get full staff.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time about an item that is on the agenda?
Yes, I would like to speak, please.
Alright, state your name and address, please.
Sure. Wendy Treach, 63 Hudson Bay Lane, Greenwood, 46142. I am the, uh, current president of the Greenwood Police Merit Commission. I was a, uh, Police Department appointee. Uh, I guess I would like to speak out against the ordinance that is, uh, not numbered right now, but appealing and re-establishing a merit system for the Greenwood Police Department. Let me start by saying that, first of all, the Merit Commission had no knowledge whatsoever of any of this ordinance, other than the fact that we were interested in the possibility of lateral transfers. Uh, that was our understanding of what, uh, an ordinance was going to be written for. Uh, I understand this has been in the works for a year, maybe two, and like I said, none of us were notified. We were not notified by city council. Uh, nobody from city council, uh, informed the Merit Commission that this was going to be introduced. I guess I'm going to have to take the opinion I am, uh, against the ordinance. I think, especially in this time where we've had all the incidences with police departments around the country, I think it's imperative that Greenwood Police Department maintain transparency of the way the department operates. The commission does not micromanage the police department. We have nothing to do with the day-to-day operations. I mean, I can go through. I have gone through our current, uh, ordinance, piece by piece. I can list several examples. I know I'm limited at time, and I'd be happy to speak to anybody, uh, in more detail on some of these. Uh, I'll, I'll cite just a couple examples. Uh, one example I'd like to say is that, uh, currently, right now, promotional testing, there is a process for it. Uh, there are interviews, police board, merit board, testing and such. Uh, these figures are compiled, and there's a list, and they are, I list them in order of finishing. The new ordinance would, uh, have the Merit Commission list the top three finishers in no particular order, and the chief would be able to select from those three. Uh, I, I think you are aware that that would mean that the, the candidate that, you know, finished the best or at the top may not get promoted if, you know, if the chief has the ability to pick one of those three and not go in the order of their finish. Uh, another concern of mine is in the hiring process. Currently, our hiring process has applicants fill out a pre-application and do an agility testing. The ordinance would have, uh, the agility testing, uh, not done until further in the process. The reason we switched this process was, uh, in past years, we had offered, uh, extended conditional offers of employment. Uh, they weren't always able to get the candidates into the academy, uh, in a very timely manner, so they were hired, put on the road, did some field training. Uh, then we would send them to the academy. Well, this could be six, eight, nine months down the road. They're probational for a year, and they go to the academy, and then they can't pass the physical fitness. So, by doing a physical agility or physical fitness assessment at the top, we, uh, can eliminate those candidates, and they know when they fill out the pre-application. They know what the academy standards are, so they can work towards that, and if, you know, if they can't, can't get them, then...
You, you, you have about a minute.
Okay.
Just to let you know.
Okay, thank you. Uh, another change that I really am not for is, uh, currently, the commission has the ability to review on its own motion an officer. Uh, say, for example, we have an officer that gets several of many, uh, disciplines, and perhaps the chief decides he doesn't want to pursue charges. Currently, the commission has the ability to look into that officer and see if we want to file our own charges. That takes that away from the commission, and, I mean, there are several other things I can go into. Uh, it also does away with our legal representation, uh, which, you know, is a minimal fee, in my opinion. And I'm concerned about if, you know, where they're going to get counsel for us. It cannot be from the city, according to the ordinance.
Alright, I'm sorry, but your time is up. I do appreciate your input, though. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, Mike Campbell. Uh, I represent Homecoming and, um, just as a-
I'm sorry, what, please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Reed, 741 Fireside Drive. I represent Homecom-
Excuse me, excuse just a minute. Uh, Mr. Mike Williams is, has joined the meeting. Councilman Williams, just want the record to reflect that he is here at the meeting now. So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Before I speak to the issue, um, is, this is my first city council meeting. There's a lot of people on this meeting that want to speak to the same issue. Are we going to skip topics, or are we just going to stick to one topic at a time in order?
The audience has an opportunity now to address anything that's on the agenda, and when, when the items come up on the agenda, the audience will not have an opportunity at that point. This is, this is not a public hearing, so...
I understand, okay.
And there is a 20-minute time limit total on each of the, uh, topics.
Okay, so I wanted to let other members of Homecoming speak to the topic, and then I wanted to ask if I could speak at the end, maybe save one minute, and just sort of summarize, um, the, the points. Uh, people from Homecoming were wanting to just take 30 seconds to a minute and just speak their opposition to the rezoning of the 98 acres, um, that has been addressed by a couple of the other speakers.
Yeah, you can use the 20 minutes any way you like, but total of five per individual, but 20 minutes total. You can use that any way you like.
Okay, so does anyone else want to speak to this issue, and then I'll, and then if it's okay, Mr. Campbell, I'll speak at the end?
Yes.
Of the 20 minutes?
Well, actually, you're down to about 18 minutes now, so... Alright, anybody? State your name and address for the record.
Uh, Patrick Denart, I'm from 712 Fireside Drive in Greenwood.
Alright.
Alright, uh, council, I appreciate taking this time. Uh, I'd like to stick against this proposal. Um, I'm a resident. I'm also very, I'm a, a very avid runner. Um, I, I know this area better than probably anybody, anybody else. Maybe the engineer might have a few more hours on this, on these trails around here than me, but I doubt it personally. Um, I think this development is irresponsible. Uh, I don't think it's right for the city. Um, I'm, I, I do believe that this ground will develop, but with this proposal that the developer has placed in front of us, he is, he's giving us a proposal, not a series of proposals. Uh, I would ask the city to, to vote this down, to deny this redevelopment until the developer brings us an accurate plan as to how they plan to use this site and not ask for a blank check, which is what they're asking for right now. Uh, currently, the entire I-65 corridor has a shortage of parking and facilities to, to accommodate large industrial trucks, such as the semis. That's why you see them parked all along the interstate, on ramps, off ramps, and they do pose danger to all the residents of Greenwood, as well as the, as well as the 65 corridor traffic. Um, there's, there's just a shortage of, of parking, there's a shortage of facilities to handle them. Um, and subsequently, what you see is semis parked on the side of the road because there's no place to handle them. Uh, I see it every day when I run out here. They're parking the sides of the road, they're parking in the lanes, they're parking in the grass. Uh, they're just, we just don't have the infrastructure in place today. Even with the plans the developer, uh, offering to improve, um, there's, there's some significant detail absent from those plans, and there's no, there's, there's not a proposal in, in place or any, anything they've published other than asking for a blank check to develop the 98 acres, um, at their discretion. Um, I do believe in the future that sites going to develop, and it likely will have a color of, of industry to it. Um, but what I asked the, the committee to do, the council to do tonight, is to vote that down and wait until we come back, so the city can make the best use of that land, not the only use of that land, which is what we're getting tonight, is one, one proposal, not a series of proposals in which we can make an educated decision. Um, that's all I got. I'm going to yield my time back to the rest of the, uh, members of University Park.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record.
Has left the meeting.
Anyone else? No, uh, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, state your name and address, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, my name is Judith Olds, O-L-D-S. I live at 372 Heritage Drive in Homecoming. I built my home 14 years ago. I built it out here because I had visions of this becoming a very diverse, uh, organ, uh, community, complete with small grocery stores, mom-and-pop businesses, little restaurants, community parks, and so forth. I did not build my home to live in a ware- to live in a warehouse industrial park. This continuing to build these warehouses, continuing to allow Amazon to build without paying taxes, is causing our property values to decrease. It's adding air, water, light, and sound pollution, and I ask that you please look to rezon this in another way that would better the community, that would better all of the homes that will be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time?
Hello, my name is Tori Matthews. I am, um, live at... And thank you for your time, and, um, like the other two residents of Homecoming, um, I vehemently oppose the rezoning for the 98 acres south of Homecoming and Allen Road. I'm extremely concerned about the, the heavy flow traffic, as well as the impact to my property value, um, by this becoming more of an industrial zone. Um, the gentleman earlier from the police department already, um, mentioned that we're down by 11 police officers, so I'm trying to, um, really, um, understand how we would address, um, all of the, the negative impact that the, uh, truck traffic would, would draw by dormant trucks, um, even sex trafficking, drug trafficking, prostitution, and all of the accidents that would occur as a result of the heavy, um, um, heavy truck traffic. So, again, I, I, um, definitely oppose this, um, this action and ask for the, the members to vote no for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
Hello?
Sorry, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my, uh, yes, my name is Terry Quam. Uh, I live on 636 Reunion Lane in Community, uh, in, uh, Ryanholm, so I would like to say no, uh, to that rezoning. Just to say what, one, I would just want to add one thing to what Judy just said earlier. She mentioned that the community is diverse. That's one of the reasons why I decided to buy a house here in Homecoming. So, now, making this become like a pollution, uh, area where you're going to have all those trucks, you know, get gasoline or diesel in, in the, in, in the air. I don't, I just don't feel like this is the right way to go for this rezoning. Uh, I'm just going to be short, and really, uh, we are, we have kids that live here, and then we really don't, we just don't want a safety, a safe and healthy and good environment for our kids to raise them here. Uh, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Someone else speak up? State your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Wife Maradona. Uh, my address, 2922 Harlem Lane, Greenwood, Indiana. Um, I was, uh, probably either the fifth or sixth house that built at Homecoming 16, 17 years ago. The reason, uh, we moved to this community because it was nice, safe, and it was a good place to raise family. Uh, especially in the past year, um, the traffic is getting, uh, pretty bad, and-
Yep.
-we don't feel safe in here anymore, because we see all kinds of traffics, and, um, because of my job, sometimes I work early or late, and, uh, we are really considering selling our property and leave. Uh, because of all these warehouses that, that we have no idea where people are coming, uh, to work, um, and it's, the traffic is terrible. Um, so, uh, I say no to this, um, more warehouses, uh, or, um, uh, Amazon or FedEx. So, if this continues, uh, a lot of people will leave this community.
Alright, thank you. Someone else? And just, uh, so you'll know, there's, you have about a little over 10 minutes left in your time.
Yeah, this is Amareek.
Yes, address?
Uh, this is Amareek Singh, address 2924 Holiday Way. I do oppose this. Uh, we've been here since 2007, since Amazon has came in and has increased a lot of traffic, and, uh, we just don't feel safe. Uh, we have, it's a different area, but I do oppose this, and, um, we just don't feel safe. And, um, everyone's, uh, driving, uh, with the kids being in the streets. Uh, so, yes, I, I oppose this, and I say no to this.
Alright, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ken Trapp. I live at 620 Classic Lane. I care if you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I oppose, uh, this, uh, ordinance to, uh, a rezone at 98 acres, uh, and, uh, I just would like to have the, the council members take into account if their homes were in Homecoming where they want this rezoning, and I'm sure that none of them would. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next?
My name is Ashley Recker. I live at 3480 Billingsley Road. We bought about 27 acres or so about, uh, several years ago, back when, um, Amazon wasn't even built yet, excuse me, and, uh, I just want to also emphasize what everyone else has been stating about the, um, traffic. Not only that, just the school buses that go up and down Griffith Road, um, even if you put in the infrastructure there, this is still residential roads we're talking about, these semis going up and down. So, I just wanted to reemphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next?
Yes, this is Kelly Higgins with 2892 Welcome Way.
Alright.
Um, I also want to reemphasize, I have two daughters with autism, and one of my biggest concerns for this is the traffic. Not only is the traffic outside of the neighborhood gotten worse, but these trucks are also coming through the neighborhood and parking in the neighborhood. Uh, my youngest daughter with autism is nonverbal, and my first concern is her running out of the house and running in the streets, and if she makes her way through the neighborhood, she could find her way out to the main roads. It's a huge concern and safety for our- It's a huge concern and safety for our kids. Not only the safety, but also the noise. We are off middle of the neighborhood, but we hear so much noise throughout the whole day and night from all the warehouses. If we have another warehouse in the neighborhood, it's only gonna get worse. So please vote no and against us and help us in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next?
Hi, this is Victor Moreno. I live at twenty-nine sixty-one Holliday Way. I just want to say that I do oppose the rezoning, uh, mostly because of the noise and the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hello. My name is Becky Reed.
You're, we're getting feedback.
All right. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, my name is Becky Reed. I live at seven forty-one Fireside Drive. I'm in the Homecoming neighborhood. I do oppose the rezoning of that property south of our neighborhood, uh, primarily because we have already seen, uh, safety issues with the current level of trucking going on, uh, right next to our neighborhood, including the, these very, uh, main roads for the school buses. Um, and I, I don't see how adding more, uh, industry in that area can possibly make that any better when it's already gotten to the level that it is. Um, so I am opposed and would like you to vote against it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. You have, uh, for the record, there's just over five minutes, so someone else would like to speak? Now would be the time.
Come on, neighbors.
Anyone else? All right. Mr. Reed, I don't hear anyone else. Would you like to draw this to a conclusion? Hello, Mr. Reed? I don't think that's him. Mike Reed, are you still with us?
Looks like he's trying to-
Still on this call. He's having a hard time getting through right now.
All right. I understand technology can be a problem, so we will give him a minute. Yeah. Yeah, challenge. I think a couple of our council, uh, counselors had difficulty this evening as well, so.
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Campbell, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I hopped on another laptop that I had ready just in case this happened.
All right.
So, uh, property values, there's a lot of studies that talk about the decrease in property values. I really don't understand if opposition is so strong. Ninety-nine percent of the comments over the last six weeks on our website on Nextdoor have been against, strongly against this proposal. Every speaker tonight who lives in this neighborhood has spoken out against this proposal. Every speaker, speaker at the hearing in Au- in August who lives in this neighborhood spoke out against the proposal and yet it still passed and was sent on to this meeting for a vote. Um, we took, uh, two opinion polls in this neighborhood, just of people who live in this neighborhood. And on average, eighty-eight percent were in favor of this rezoning to allow the industrial park to be built right next to our neighborhood. We have about three hundred signatures and we're still gathering them for people, just from people that live in this neighborhood, um, which is about, by the time the last house is built, uh, a year from now, it'll be nine hundred and thirty-three homes in Homecoming alone, not counting the other impacted neighborhoods on the other side of Main Street. Um, we're talking about six thousand residents, okay? Uh, you've heard about property value, you've heard about air pollution. There will be water pollution, just as just a natural, uh, side effect of paving and having runoff from autumn, from trucks and, and traffic going into the drainage system. You're gonna have sound pollution as has been mentioned, that we already have a lot of, without there being a hundred acre industrial park right next to our neighborhood. We already have light pollution because in one direction, west of our neighborhood, there was already warehouses. We understand that. Um, uh, there has been recent posts, just in the last three days, about attempted kidnappings in neighborhoods near Homecoming, about, uh, uh, armed robbery, break-ins. Uh, we don't have statistics yet because it's too early, but since Amazon went up, um, because of all the thousands of new employees coming into Greenwood, um, we're seeing all this increase in crime. Um, the, uh, the traffic, I video, I took pictures just at three fifteen this afternoon of a school bus turning onto Collins Road, a two-lane road, coming off of Allen Road, a two-lane road, with an eighteen-wheeler turning at the same time. And they, they missed each other because it was sunny and clear. The streets were dry and both drivers fortunately were paying attention to the, the school bus and the truck driver was paying attention. And the other cars, including myself, that were at that intersection that has one stop sign, they were paying attention. What's gonna happen when it's dark in the morning after daylight savings time? What's gonna happen when the streets are icy? What's gonna happen if we have a truck driver? Many of whom are from other countries and, and don't, aren't used to the rules of the road of the United States because they haven't been driving the United States for decades, like many professional drivers. What's gonna happen if you have a school bus driver who is, uh, takes their eyes off the, uh, the, the road ahead of them for half of a second? You're gonna have a school bus full of children get hit by an eighteen-wheeler when this city council was warned of the dangers. The lawsuits are gonna be going on for years and years and years and years.
You have one minute, Mr. Reed.
Okay. Now, um, I appreciate that a one million dollars has been offered to the city of Greenwood to pay overlay Graham Road, which isn't even connected, it's a half a mile or more away from the property we're discussing tonight. I don't know, I don't know what you call that. Uh, the Attorney General of Indiana might call that a bribe. Maybe it's just a normal way of doing business. I'm not a developer. I don't know. I don't, I'm not in city council. I don't know. I do know this is that we elected you guys to protect our interests, our health and our safety. And to vote for this rezoning is to go get everything you stand for as, as a part of the government of Greenwood. We don't oppose all rezoning. We don't oppose all development. We just oppose the dangerous rezoning of land right next to our homes. We will work with city council. We have already met with this developer and have committed to continuing to meet with this developer because we want to help them modify their plan or come up with a new plan so that this development can be developed, this land can be developed responsibly in a way that won't damage our property values, create pollution, crime, health and, um, safety, traffic problems and, um, lower the quality of life.
All right, Mr. Reed, I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you.
I'm finished. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on a topic other than that rezoning?
Yes, Mr. President, um, Kate Collins on behalf of the Builders Association of Greater Indianapolis. Address for the record is sixty-five ten Helicon Drive, Indianapolis, four six two seven eight. I just wanted to take a moment to, um, speak favorably of the unified development ordinance process. I believe it was number, uh, twenty, uh, item number twenty dash twenty-nine on your agenda. Um, I wanted to thank Mr. Davis, first of all, for being engaged in countless virtual meetings, um, to address questions on behalf of the residential development community and just to discuss with us ways to achieve the city's desired outcomes. Um, I know that the development community has felt like it was a huge part of the outreach process, but with Mr. Davis taking things back to the steering committee for consideration and providing clear communication throughout the whole process. Um, I know that projects like this are a huge magnitude and, uh, the process we felt was very fair and easy. So thank you to Dale for including us in this process.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here tonight wishing to address an item on the agenda? Give you just a second. All right. Hearing none, then we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Under notice of intent to consider, ordinance number twenty dash twenty-two.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by reference in zoning ordinance number eighty-two dash one and amended proposed rezoning and removal of approximately twelve point one six four acres from the south I sixty-five, Worceville Road overlay zone district sponsored by Dine.
Do you have a motion? Don't move. Motion by Mr. Dine, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pendleton. Um, Mr. Tui, would you like to, uh, address this?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Campbell and members of the, President Campbell, members of the common council. Uh, thank you for, uh, opportunity to address the common council. Here with me tonight is Dave Duncan and Courtney Lehman from GLA Properties, the developer of these, uh, this site and the site that is subject to the zoning case, uh, immediately next. With your permission, President Campbell, I would probably give an overview of both of these cases at the same time. If that's acceptable to the council, I think it would move things along.
Yeah, I think that would make things go a little quicker, so thank you.
Okay. Um, and I believe Mr. Davis, uh, has a PowerPoint of each of these cases. And I would start with the twelve acre case, which is a, on Graham Road. If Mr. Davis could put that up on the screen, that would be terrific. And I'll walk through that, uh, with the common council. Thank you, um, Dale. So, uh, members of the common council, up on your screen now shows this site. And it's actually, it's a total of twelve acres where we're requesting rezoning from the suburban fringe to the I-one light industrial. And also that we would remove this site from the south I four sixty-five Worceville Road overlay zone. The site is actually two sites. There's one site there on, uh, sort of the left-hand side of the screen, right next to I sixty-five. And then another site on the south side of Graham Road, which is about three point four acres. And the first site's about eight point seven acres. The development around this site, as you can see, is I-two and I-one uses. And then another use is coming in. The I-two is Lion's Head Metal. It's not there yet. Um, and so, and there's also the California Fruits Business, which is just north of there. And what we propose is that this site is no longer really compatible to be a suburban fringe kind of zoning. And we would propose to have an I-one use and then a, a fire station site down on the south side, which would be, uh, dedicated to the, uh, town of Greenwood with the, with the
Judith Olds.
These two zonings.
Has left the meeting.
This, the existing zoning is really outlined for agricultural uses, designated for agricultural uses. And that's really not practical anymore, given what's happened to this site. Next slide, please. So this, uh, slide illustrates where the two sites are. The larger site is to the left in kind of a triangular shape. And the other site is to the right in the rectangle shape. Next slide, please. Again, that's an aerial showing what's been developed around that site. You can see Graham Road, uh, coming down south and then turning east towards, uh, Collins Road. And there's the two sites. Next slide, please. That's some improvements that are going along Graham Road now. Uh, next slide, please. That shows Graham Road looking, uh, south as it turns to the east. Next slide, please. That shows the south side of the site. Next slide, please. So, uh, the suburban fringe is, is called for, uh, agricultural uses. And as you can see, that's just not practical anymore. And that's why we're respectfully asking that the site be zoned to the I-one light industrial. Next slide, please. And here's how we would lay the site out, uh, members of the council. Uh, the light industrial site would be in that triangular area. And there would be a small light industrial site in the rectangular area known as Site Two. And then the proposed fire station parcel would be right there on Graham Road as it turns east, just to the right or east of the light industrial site. Next slide, please. So we, uh, this summarizes, uh, the purpose of the rezoning. And that's the rezonate to I-one, the twelve acres. And we are respectfully asking that the, uh, site be taken out of the south I sixty-five Worceville overlay. Uh, next slide, please. We've entered into several commitments, uh, and I'll go into that in more detail in the next case. But what they do is they assure the common council and, uh, the town of Greenwood and the planning commission that the buildings will be of a certain quality, have a certain kind of material, uh, and be built in a manner that will be complimentary and compatible with the existing, uh, buildings that are out there uh, in that area already. Next slide, please. Again, more commitments regarding facades, that there would be no outside storage. The trash enclosures and trash compactors would be, uh, enclosed and, and that they would have architecture and materials similar to the building. Next slide, please. Uh, lighting, uh, and signage would, would also be addressed by these commitments. Next slide, please. Uh, that's relating to the signage commitment. Next slide, please. So you've heard some conversation and some concern about roadway improvements. And I'll get that into that in the next presentation. But, uh, as you heard from the engineer, there has been significant improvements paid for by this developer. And members of the common council, in no way, shape or form is that a form of bribery. That is a form of working with the Greenwood City Planning Department and the Greenwood Engineers to listen to what residents have said their concerns are, to listen to what traffic experts and traffic engineers uh, have suggested the improvements are that are necessary to accommodate these new developments. And that's what this developer did. And so there was no, no form at all of bribery. It was a, it was a, it was a planned method of collaborative work to come up with roadway improvements that would address traffic issues that come from development, that come from progress. Next slide, please. So in summary, we believe this zoning is compatible with the industrial uses around the area. We think the statement of reasons support the proposed rezoning. This will allow for substantial capital investment and bring jobs to this area. It will allow for a new fire station site. The planning staff recommended a favorable recommendation of this petition. And the planning commission forwarded a favorable recommendation, recommendation of this, uh, petition. The petitioner agreed to all the commitments requested by the staff. And those are the ones I outlined, uh, a minute ago. And the petitioner has invested, um, already approximately four million dollars in off-site roadway improvements. And when these are approved, there will be another million plus invested in roadway improvements. So members of the common council, there, there will be in excess of five million dollars in roadway improvements that will come with these two zonings, uh, that should, uh, in large part, address these traffic issues. And that's supported by the studies that we've had done by traffic engineering experts who have worked with the town's planning department and the engineering department. May we please go to the next presentation? Thank you. Uh, Dale, if you could go to the other case? Thank you. So, uh, thank you, Dale. Members of the council, this is addressing the ninety-eight acre site. It's on the south side of Allen Road. So it's on the southeast corner of Allen Road and, um, Collins Road. It is directly across the street from the Homecoming neighborhood. And we have listened very carefully to the residents of Homecoming and, and designed this site and come up with some commitments, which I'll get to in a minute, that we believe, uh, address a number of their concerns. But you can see from this map that that whole area in that aerial map, except for Homecoming, is zoned I-one and I-two. And Allen Road is sort of the demarcation line between industrial uses and the residential uses. And Homecoming has existed very well with industrial uses around it, surrounded it to the west for many years. This site is designed to continue that coexistence of these two uses. Next slide, please. Um, this just outlines what the I-one use is. Uh, and it's designed to act as a transitional use between heavy industrial districts and less intensive uses such as commercial or residential. So we're right between residential and heavier industrial to the south. We fit right in what- We fit right in what the Greenwood ordinance contemplated when it looked for where I-one uses would go. Next slide, please. You can see this is a, a site plan, an area map showing the various developments around the site, and the site is outlined in green, next slide, please. That's a photograph of the north side of the site, and the reason I wanted the council to note that is note that distance and note the full-growth trees on the south side of homecoming and that raised berm. Because in a, in a second, I'll show you another slide, how we're going to, uh, supplement that screen, next slide, please. So there's a hundred feet in the right-of-way between that berm and those full-growth trees that I just showed you, before you even get to the edge of our site. Next slide, please. So what we've committed to, members of the common council, uh, is a hundred and twenty-foot setback of, with a berm of this twelve feet tall. So think about that, that's top, taller than a basketball goal by a couple of feet. That hundred and twenty-foot setback is three times what the required setback is under the Greenwood ordinance. And so the, the developer is setting aside that property, a hundred and twenty feet wide by the entire length of that property, where all it will be, will be a landscaped twelve-foot-tall berm. That berm, in addition to providing a visual screening with landscape on it, will provide a terrific noise screening for, between the residences to the north and the industrial to the south. In addition, that berm will have, or that the site will have a fifty-foot-wide setback over on Collins Road and a forty-five-foot-wide setback with six-foot berms on both the east and west side. So on three sides of the development, members of the coun, common council, there will be a twelve-foot berm and two six-foot-tall berms, which will screen this site very well with, uh, full-growth landscape. Next slide, please. In fact, Dale, could, could we go back one slide, there was one other thing I meant to mention about that. The other commitment we made is you'll see in this slide is there are no truck entrances on the north side of that site. That's to keep those trucks from coming, using Allen Road. Now, we can't prevent all of them from coming on there, but you'll notice down in the left-hand corner, the truck entrance to this site is lined up with Stacy's Way across the street. And that's to facilitate truck entrances into the southern part of the site, the furthest part of the site away from our residential neighbors. And so there will be no truck entrances allowed on the north side of this site. Next slide, please. That's a berm that is west of the site now, it's about six foot tall, our berm will be twice the height of that. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of what the site looks like now with no berm, and the next slide, please, Dale. That shows what a twelve-foot landscape berm would look like from the road view. And I am advised that from the road view of Allen Road with that twelve-foot berm in there, you will not, you will not be able to see the loading docks, uh, that would be on the buildings that would be proposed to be built behind that berm. Next slide, please. That's a rendering of what it would look like with the buildings behind it, and you can see that you cannot see the loading docks, those, those, uh, visual things that you see at the, right at the top of the berm, those are not loading docks. Those are part of the architecture of the building, the loading docks would be below that. Next slide, please. So with this zoning and these commitments, uh, members of the common council, it, there's been an effort to meet and, uh, address the concerns of the neighbors. And that's, this, this site plan, these berms are part of this zoning and run with the land, so it's not like they could develop it without it, they have to go in in order to get a building permit. We had a long call with the neighbors on Friday evening, and, and we've heard their concerns, we've heard their concerns at the planning commission, uh, and we've tried to address them, next slide, please. So this slide, and I'll ask Dale to move through the next slide, as the, uh, Greenwood's engineer mentioned, there has been significant road improvements. Here, this shows that Graham was widened to four lanes, they constructed Stacy's Way at their expense and dedicated it to the town. There's a full-length widening of Collins Road. And it, and we, it would be constructed in extension of Graham Road to the east, all those improvements were designed to alleviate the traffic concerns and move traffic through the industrial park in a faster, more efficient manner. Next slide, please. So in addition, there's current work that's being done right now, there's improvements to the main and Graham intersection, the, um, as highlighted by this, uh, rendering or photograph here. You can see, as your town engineer mentioned, we've improved that main and Graham intersection. And, uh, we're, we're going to improve that, we've agreed to do that, and that will allow that traffic to move more rapidly and efficiently through that intersection, next slide, please. We've also, will improve the Graham and Allen intersection, again, we're adding lanes, as the engineer mentioned, to allow turning traffic to quickly clear the intersection. And also to provide room, in that instance, one, uh, neighbor spoke of concerning buses and semi-traffic, uh, coming together. This will alleviate those concerns or greatly improve them, uh, the, uh, improve the traffic flow of these, at these intersections, next slide, please. And the Graham and Collins intersection, I mentioned, we've extended that, uh, road to the east. There, you can see these turn lanes, again, that, uh, the engineer spoke of, uh, next slide, please. And then at Collins and Worce, uh, Worceville Road, uh, the next slide will show we've improved that intersection, again, to clear traffic through there. And to alleviate, uh, and address, uh, the concerns of our neighbors, uh, regarding traffic, next slide, please. And then lastly, upon approval, we'll mill and overlay resurface Graham Road from Main Street to, um, uh, from Main Street to Allen Road. Again, in no way, shape or form is that a bribery or anything underhanded. It's the result of a concerted effort to work with the town's planning department and the town's engineers and improve the roads in this area. While at the same time, increasing the tax base of this land from about four million dollars a year and a, four million dollars in assessed value to over a hundred million dollars in assessed value. So this is a very important, uh, development in terms of creating tax base and creating jobs in the Greenwood community. Next slide, please. These are the commitments that I, uh, referenced in the other case, these are the same commitments, but if Dale would go through the other, uh, next slide, please. Next slide, please. Those are the setbacks, uh, outlining the berms, this is a, a photograph, an existing bill, a building out there. Those commitments, uh, generate that kind of quality construction, and that's what you'll see on this site. And I think there's one last slide I'd like to address, after this one, please, next one. That's our summary, next slide, please. Members of the common council, thank you for your time this evening, there was a number of comments that talked about, uh, concern over decrease in property values. So we went to the Bennett, uh, residential real estate firm, and we had them, uh, pull some data from the Metropolitan Indianapolis Board of Realtors. As to what homecoming prices for homes had done in the last couple of years, because that's when all this development has occurred. And in some, members of the common council, from two thousand eighteen, in the homecoming subdivision, the average selling price has gone from two hundred and three thousand dollars to two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, uh, through about August of this year. That's almost a twenty percent increase in the average selling price in homecoming from two thousand eighteen till midway through this year. I just don't think the evidence is there to support the notion that industrial development has decreased property values when there's been a twenty percent increase, about a twenty percent increase in two years. For those reasons, uh, we would respectfully request that the common council give favorable consideration to our two zoning petitions. Thank you for your time this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tooey, is anyone on the council have a question for Mr. Tooey at this time? Any discussion or questions, uh, on, from anyone on the council about this ordinance? Any comments?
Uh, Mr. President, I just want to make sure that we're speaking solely to the twelve-acre rezoning at this point.
Yes, right now, the only one, uh, the ordinance that's on the floor is ordinance twenty-two. And that's the one we have a motion and a second for.
Thank you.
All right, but I, we, we had him do the presentation for both at the same time for, uh, the same time.
Nope, I just want to make sure we would be able to address the next ordinance as well.
Yes, yes, we will, yeah, so any other comments or questions on ordinance twenty-two? All right, hearing none, roll call ordinance twenty-two.
Campbell.
Hi.
Dine.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your answer.
Hi.
Pendleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-two passes on a vote of nine to zero. All right, ordinance twenty-three, do I have a motion? I'm sorry, Ms. Coons, mo, ordinance twenty-three.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by reference in zoning ordinance number eighty-two dash one as amended proposed rezoning and removal. Will currently ninety-eight point eight eight six acres from the south I-sixty-five Worceville Road overlay zone district located at the southeast corner of Allen and Collins Road sponsored by Dine.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion of Mr. Dine, second.
Second.
Hi. Mr. Hopper, all right. Any discussion on ordinance twenty-three or questions for Mr. Tooey or comments?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to, uh, address this ordinance.
All right.
Um, so council, obviously, tonight, we've heard from numerous of our neighbors here in homecoming of regarding this rezoning. And all I can say is, I want to hark this back to the rezoning that was proposed with the Arbor, uh, development. We had a large public outcry, and we all decided, what was the rush? Why are we rushing to develop this land? We do not know exactly what the site plan is proposed, I respect Skanel for their willingness to discuss about these commitments. However, we don't know exactly what they are proposing for this land, other than a, pretty much, let us develop it as we see fit. There's too many things that we need to look at here, guys, the infrastructure is not there. We can talk about no trucks on Allen all day, but go out there at four or five o'clock every day, and you'll see three or four trucks lined up, ready to turn. Uh, the infrastructure is not there, we have numerous times where trucks have slid off the road. The area is not prepared to write such a blank check for development. And I would hope the people on the council here would be willing to agree that our job is to listen to our constituents, understand their concerns, and represent those concerns on this council. Like I said, Skanel, thank you very much, I appreciate your willingness and openness, uh, to listen to the citizens regarding their issues. But again, there's, the issues are not addressed, and they will continue to be unaddressed through this proposed rezoning. And I do want to touch real fast on, you know, we want to talk about home values, um, you can't attribute that just solely based on warehouse development. Uh, go look at a house at Tenth and Tibbs, an up-and-coming neighborhood in Indiana, I guess you might say. Uh, house values there, assessed values have raised sixteen percent in that exact same timeframe, so, um, again, you can't look at this as just a, we've been immune to warehouse development, rather than the overall impact of just the economy's impact on home values. So again, council, I just hope that you do take the time to listen to the residents, uh, and understand the issue here of giving such a blank check when it boils down to this rezon.
All right, thank you, Mr. Williams, anyone else on the council with a comment or a question?
I'd agree with what Mike just said, this is Dave Lexi.
All right.
Mr. Campbell, I do have a few things to add on to what Mike said.
Yes.
I, I do want to thank Skanel for meeting and hearing those concerns, a lot of folks that come to us don't necessarily go that far. And so I want to say that is appreciated, um, I do value the opinions of the professionals that the city has in these, um, areas. However, when we look at the data that we've paid for studies on this area, that's not what our most recent comprehensive plan, which granted, we need to update that, but that's not what it says this land is going to be used for. For traffic, I did reach out to the police chief, he, uh, he was gracious enough to give me some data. Since twenty-eighteen, we've had nine semi slide-offs east of sixty-five, with three of those being on Collins or Allen Roads. And as it's been, school bus routes, we have school buses going there. Add in what we just approved with the fire department, we now have fire trucks going there. So we can't really put more semis on that road and, and take that risk. The housing impact, you, you know, we can go back and forth on that all day. But the other thing I want to bring up is, what about the land east of that, at what point do we stop? I mean, if we rezone this and it all becomes industrial, next we're going to say, well, the land east of there, what else could it be? We're not going to keep that, uh, suburban fringe or agricultural, it needs to be industrial. So until we see data, until we see plans, I don't think this is the best fit right now, uh, not saying it won't be later, uh, but right now, I, I just don't see that this is, uh, something that we, uh, would be doing a service to our, our residents by doing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pendleton. Anyone else on the council? With a comment or a question? All right, hearing none, roll call ordinance twenty-three.
Dine.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Nay.
Pendleton.
Nay.
Williams.
Nay.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Hi. Ordinance twenty-three passes on a vote of five to four. Ordinance twenty-nine.
An ordinance to repeal the zoning ordinance including the official zoning map, vision control and land development ordinance in chapter ten.
Ashley Renter.
Has left the meeting. On the Greenwood Municipal Code, nineteen.
Patrick Denhart.
With a unified development ordinance and official zoning map, and to repeal all ordinances in conflict therewith, sponsored by Dine.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion of Mr. Dine, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, I believe.
Has left the meeting.
Any discussion, any presentation on ordinance twenty-nine?
Uh, yes, sir, I have a presentation for you.
Go ahead, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, go ahead.
I'm bringing it up right now.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance we have before you is, uh, was read in as a repeal and replacement of our current zoning ordinance. Uh, before you, uh, right on the screen now is a timeline of how we, uh, got to this point. Our project started over, uh, two years ago, and we have had extensive public outreach, stakeholder outreach, uh, during this, this process. What is changing, well, this is unified development ordinance, which means our subdivision standards are integrated into the ordinance. Um, this ordinance is a simplified format that's arranged by topics. Our zoning districts themselves are more simplified, um, you'll notice, we didn't really go down in the number of absolute districts, but we no longer have overlay zones. So we don't have that second level of, uh, standards. Now, I say that, we do still have two overlays for the, uh, airport and for, um, floodplain, but that is because those two, uh, districts are regulated a little bit separately of, of our own standards, be it FEMA or FAA. Uh, we've also added some use-specific standards, um, previously, when we had the overlay districts, something might be permitted on US thirty-one, but not on one thirty-five or, uh, by sixty-five. We've added some use-specific standards to, uh, help address, uh, uses like that. Our architectural standards will now be consistent across the community. In the, uh, same manner as, uh, the uses that I mentioned, you might also have different architectural standards across our community. You could have an older building on US thirty-one that has very little standard to it, while putting that same building on one thirty-five would have a much heightened standard. So these new standards speak more towards building type than it. So these new standards speak more towards building type than it does location. Again, trying to provide that, uh, level playing field across the community. Um, we're giving more options for site design and residential architecture. Um, we have enacted ordinances for items such as environmental site design, which you would use swales or other vegetated, uh, areas. The previous ordinance would have had some conflicts with that. Our new ordinance, uh, embodies that a little bit more. We've also added more paths for residential architecture. We have a path that's very similar to what we're, uh, used to with the brick and, uh, having vinyl, uh, the high, the thicker, uh, vinyl. But we've also added paths that look more at massing and they're also geared more towards the types of products we're seeing these days. We've added a third path that is geared towards your custom homes. Uh, our current standards, and this is true of, uh, zoning ordinances across the state and across the country. You're penalized for wanting to do something unique, to do something different, to really invest in your property and bring some, some true architecture. So we've, uh, added this additional path to where hopefully if someone wants to build a truly unique home, that their first stop isn't the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, we've also added some non-conformance language that intends to allow people to reinvest in their properties to a point when they are legal non-conforming. So if somebody has a small parking lot expansion or a room addition or, uh, some other small addition, they'd be able to do that again without going to the BZI. Here's a look at our format. We've simplified with, uh, graphics and tables. Uh, it's the same, some of the same information we have, uh, is presented in a different way. Here's a comparison, a rough comparison, I should say, of how our new zones, uh, match our existing zones. So you'll notice that, uh, especially as residential goes, we've gone from, uh, potentially six zones down to three. That is because the majority of the development we see in the community is in the R-two-A, R-two-B area. That becomes RM. RL captures the bigger lots and RA, uh, catches anything attached. There's also a caveat to that that allows townhomes. I've also put a bulk standard comparison, uh, in, in this, uh, presentation. It's a lot to take in just on a first glance, but the intent was to show that we tried to use the standards that we have to distill into something that's still, still not too far from what we had, but is, uh, kind of speaks to what we're, we're seeing currently. And when you see the front setbacks that say varies, that's because our setbacks right now are dependent on the functional classification of a road. Now, when we develop something, we always require that the, uh, property is dedicated to that thoroughfare plan right-of-way with. So we thought moving forward, it made more sense for the front setbacks to be standardized. And these zones had no comparison, Old Town, Old Town Residential, Interstate, uh, Commerce and the Airport. Um, these are new zones. The Old Town is intended to speak to the, uh, buildings we would see as infill or redevelopment. The Old Town Residential speaks more towards our older housing stock with the smaller lots. Um, there are two zoning doesn't necessarily, uh, embody right now. The Interstate Zone reflects more of what the overlays, uh, used to reflect, but it also merges a little bit more of that, uh, heavier commercial into it. And then the Airport District, it blends more towards the, uh, light industrial, uh, side, also retaining that, that commercial and even potentially some, uh, residential multifamily type of development. So architecture, as we, I mentioned, uh, we're creating that community-wide consistent standard. Uh, we're focusing on massing, we're offering options and we're provi- uh, a big change is we're providing for accessory dwelling units. Um, especially as downtown has experienced a bit of a renaissance. Uh, some of these smaller homes have deeper lots and people are wanting to put in, uh, essentially granny flats or another, uh, a secondary smaller dwelling. So this, within certain parameters, will allow a development like that to happen. Um, most of your residential neighborhoods in the surrounding community, uh, your traditional, uh, your traditional lots in a subdivision, they probably aren't going to have the depth or the width to make something like that work. Um, you'll see in the image, uh, to the right of the screen, that, uh, graphic in the middle of the screen shows how we're regulating our residential architecture more by bulk standards and massing than necessarily by materials. That shows how we're looking at the, uh, percentage of the facade in terms of, uh, how much of its garage. We're also looking at site design, want to focus on connectivity. Um, we're maintaining our current right-of-way requirements. I know there's, uh, there's always some concern about, you know, do we have enough room for the road? I know recently the, uh, city staff had worked to, uh, widen our right-of-way standards. So we maintained that and, uh, carried it forward in this ordinance. Um, we've also, as I mentioned, accommodated environmental design. We also looked, uh, carefully at our parking ratios. You'll notice that some of the ratios have been taken out of the document. That's because those are uses, specifically some of the, the biggest uses, like our, our warehouse users. Um, they parked the site for more vehicles than we have ever required. And on the flip side of that, you see, uh, a site like the mall that is technically underparked by our current ordinance. And it has, uh, an abundance of parking. So adjusting that would give them, uh, give the mall and other big users like that some options moving forward. Uh, what remains the same? The signage has stayed, uh, fairly close to what we had. It's been, uh, modified a little bit to fit the new, uh, new format and new zones. But, and the calculations, those types of standards, those have all been brought forward or permitting procedures, that'll remain the same. Uh, enforcement will also remain the same. Uh, here is our updated zoning map. Uh, you'll notice that after, uh, Plan Commission, two changes were made. Those were both down in the south, uh, west portion of the community. Um, we had a group of properties, um, rezoned to commercial, if you can see my cursor on the screen. And we had one property, uh, rezone to agricultural. Uh, just an overview of our stakeholder outreach. Um, we, and we have invited, uh, everyone to our, uh, open house. We've, uh, had outreach to council, providing, uh, our drafts. Um, same with Plan Commission. We had a very involved steering committee who I am so thankful for their, their guidance and their dedication and their work. And also our city staff who has tirelessly reviewed every, every draft we've had. Um, our commercial industrial brokers have also been very involved and very, uh, helpful in taking the time to, uh, review our document and provide feedback. I think it's really helped us dial in the zones. And the same for, uh, the Builders Association and our residential developers. They've really taken the time to, uh, review the document, provide some very valuable feedback. Um, I think we, we've had a good dialogue and it, it landed us in a good place. The, this is probably one of the, one of the good things that came out of our, our COVID lockdown is that everybody had a chance to review this and we've actually had some really good discussions. Um, our open house feedback, we really didn't have a lot of feedback at our, uh, public open house at the amphitheater. Um, we did have some discussion about the flood zone standards. Um, those are based on what, um, the DNR wants us to have adopted for our floodplain regulations and for our flood insurance standards. Uh, we also had a lot of questions about just Old Town redevelopment. Um, we also had some, uh, submitted feedback as well. But we'll have some associated document updates, um, as soon as the new ordinance is adopted. Um, there's a set of items that need to find their way into, uh, the municipal code if they're not already there. Um, because these are items that generally we want to see a little bit, uh, more proactive action on. And zoning violations don't necessarily, uh, get us there as quickly as we'd like to see. We also, uh, will have some, uh, updates to our rules of, uh, procedure. In terms of submittals, we've pulled some of that information out of the ordinance because we didn't think it was necessary. And by state law, it's also not necessary to list every single document and page that we need submitted in the actual ordinance when it could be in the rules. So we don't have to do an ordinance amendment every time we want to require a different document. So what about my home? Uh, if you desire to stay in your home and you want to just keep using it, uh, the way it is, this, there's nothing to do. This does not affect that. Um, this does offer more flexibility and options, uh, both for accessory structures and for reuse of the, the property, even if it is legal non-conforming. Uh, what about my business? Same with the home. Uh, if you want to keep using it as it is and it's legal, uh, currently, then it is either legal or legal non-conforming moving forward and you may continue to use it. Um, we do have options for minor expansions now, but if you get over the threshold of the minor expansion, then, uh, full compliance with the ordinance would be required. Uh, in-progress projects, this ordinance only affects things that are, uh, submitted after it is adopted. So if a project is in the works, then it gets to keep moving forward under the, uh, current zoning standards. That said, if something is early in the process and finds the new ordinance more advantageous, we would certainly be willing to talk about that with the applicant, but they would have to work with us to give us, uh, something in writing saying that they're, they're waiving their vested rights because that is a legal right that they have and we're, we're not going to take it of our own accord. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis. Any questions for Mr. Davis from the council?
Mr. President, I have one. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who did work on this. It was an amazing thing, uh, in the meeting and I think they've done a wonderful job. But, uh, we have talked about monitoring the canopies for the columns holding down some, uh, gas stations to have the ancient wrap on. And I was talking to Davis today and he said that was not, uh, a fraction of it. And so I wonder, um, if that's a manual that we would need to make and bring along.
Sorry, Linda, I, the last part of that I could not hear.
Okay, I didn't know if we need to amend it to include that, if our legal could give us direction on how to go about getting that included. Mr. Davis said he felt like that that should be a part of this ordinance.
Mr. Davis, you, you've talked to Mr. Davis?
I have.
All right.
Dale, do you want to say?
Sure. Um, what we had talked about was, uh, in our overlays currently, um, it's not necessarily a written standard, but it's a practice that we require the gas station canopies to have the, uh, brick wrap on their support columns at gas stations. Um, and Ms. Gibson was, uh, mentioning that that is a, and I agree that that's a standard we should, uh, add into the use-specific standards, uh, for gas stations in our new ordinance. I think that is, uh, a worthwhile amendment.
All right, then in that case, I'd entertain an amendment to add that to this ordinance.
Still move.
We have a motion by Ms. Gibson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion on the proposed amendment to ordinance twenty-nine? Hearing none and roll call on the amendment to ordinance twenty-nine.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
All right.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Pendleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Dine.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-nine is amended on a vote of nine to zero. Any additional discussion on ordinance twenty-nine?
Mr. President, I have another item. And I might be the only person that feels this way, that in certain, um, areas of this code, there's only an eight-foot side setback. And I understand that people are wanting smaller lots and putting more of their leasing space in the back. But if you just look in the room that you're setting in, and maybe there's a window there that's thirty-six inches. So think about multiplying that and only having sixteen feet. That's just a little over five times that window. And I would like to see us consider having a two-foot side setback. You know, when we look at renditions from Lamar and from Arbor Homes, that looks really congested and, uh, I just, I would just like first to think about it. I wonder what anyone else thinks.
Mr. Davis, was that discussed in any of your meetings?
Um, yes, when we, uh, moved those, uh, residential standards forward, we tried to embody the current standards that we have, um, in terms of R-two-A, R-two-B, because that is where we see the majority of our building. And our current R-two-A and R-two-B both have a side yard setback of eight feet. So that was, uh, that was carried forward. I know at one point there was, uh, a question, uh, of the builders and, you know, a response to the, to the city that, you know, would you look at reducing that? And we, we were not favorable of that. We wanted to stay at the, the eight feet that we had.
So the builders wanted it smaller?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But I'm glad you stayed with at least the eight feet, so. Any other comments or questions from the council regarding what Ms. Gibson just mentioned?
Would also be in favor of, uh, the nine feet.
All right.
Mr. Dine, my, my hope was it would be ten feet.
A ten feet would even be better in my opinion, but, uh, I was going to be a team player on this.
Mr. Davis, you have an opinion on this?
Um, at most, the side yard setback would make sense at, uh, ten feet because that is our, uh, current R-two standard. Um, and in my opinion, eight feet is, uh, I understand the concern about it being narrow, but eight feet is, um, what a lot of neighborhoods are, are developing at. Um, it's what a lot of our newer neighborhoods are currently developing at. So mu- moving forward, I personally, I would stay at the eight, but I understand the concern to, to widen to ten and appreciate that, especially for the fire safety aspect.
I certainly would be in favor of the ten feet setback as well.
Well, uh, Ms. Coons, can we make that adjustment by, with a simple amendment?
Yes, it would have to be an amendment to the proposed zoning. Um, he had the standards up, so just to have a motion to amend, he, was it side yard setback or?
RM.
RM only to ten feet.
Okay, all right, I will entertain a motion then, if, if so desired, to amend ordinance twenty-nine to make the, uh, setback, uh, for RM zoning to, from eight feet to ten feet.
Still move.
Motion Mr. Bates, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine, I think. Any discussion on the proposed amendment? Hearing none, then roll call on the amendment just proposed to ordinance twenty-nine.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Pendleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Dine.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
All right, ordinance twenty-nine is amended a second time on a vote of nine to zero. Any other discussion among the council?
Okay, I do feel like I need to explain the process to you because under thirty-six, seven, four, six, oh, six, this is an ordinance to repeal and replace the entire zoning ordinance and zone map. And the process is when it is certified to you from the Plan Commission favorably, as it was, you can adopt it. You can reject it or you can amend it. You have opted to amend it. When you amend it, it has to be sent back now to the Plan Commission and they have to consider those amendments and they have forty-five days, uh, to consider those. And, uh, if the commission approves the amendments, then the ordinance will stand as passed by the legislative body as of the date of the filing of the commission's report of approval. then the ordinance will stand as passed by the legislative body as of the date of the filing of the commission's report of approval at the, uh, conclusion of the 45 day period, or if they fail to act under the 45 days, um, then it will stand as approved as of the date that you pass it as amended. If the commission, uh, disapproves your amendment, then it will have to come back to you for, uh, one more additional vote.
Okay.
Go ahead and pass it as amended. I just wanted to explain to you what will now happen. It won't be finished this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Coons. Any other discussion on the council?
Yeah, a few things.
Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, so not too long ago, probably, I think it's our most recent overlay is the 135 district. So we have a laundry list of things that we didn't want to see go in there. Um, you know, I've done the best I can to look at your rubric and, um, you know, it went from B1, C1, C2, and C3 to, I think, now CL, CM, CS, and AG up along the 135, um, corridor. It appears like this is the one that jumps out at me the most, that, uh, retail convenience store gas stations would now be, you get carte blanche in the 135 corridor. So we'll now see one on every corner, which is what will happen if we don't, exclude those. Um, so I guess I'm looking for just an explanation maybe on, on what the thought, thought process was on not including things that we most recently excluded from 135 now let them in, so.
Uh, yes, and I am, uh, turning to the, uh, use specific standards. Um, in there, we have looked at a few of the, the uses that, um, as you mentioned, like the 135 overlay, uh, we would not want to, want to see along that corridor. So fueling stations, for example, uh, shall not be located within 150 feet of, uh, State Road 135. Uh, shall not be located within 600 feet of another fueling station. Um, and this, this second part of the language, except that two stations may be allowed at three intersections. Um, that language is from our current code. We brought that forward. And they may not be located within 400 feet of residential properties. So we did, uh, put some standards in there to try and keep, uh, fueling stations off of 135, uh, in respect to what was in the 135 overlay.
Uh, the other ones that jumped out at me as I was going through that rubric were, um, car lots. So you could have vehicle sales, um, motorcycles and automobiles. I can't for the life of me figure out why we would want a car dealership over on 135 or even one of these used car lots. Um, you know, we've kind of designated that area as, uh, what we want, you know, higher end things to, to come in. So, um, that seemed to be principally permitted use. Um, is that also dealt with somewhere in the bid, um, that I didn't see or is that allowed?
Um, I am double checking, but I believe it is allowed and, uh, yes, there's no use, uh, specific standards for that. So that is allowed wherever allowed by zoning.
All right. So I guess my question, uh, maybe this is Shawna's question. Um, as this goes back to the planning commission, are they able to make any further changes or would we have to make them now?
You would have to make them now because it's, you amended and look at it as one whole piece. They either approve the amendments or they reject them.
Yeah.
So, so we could add a use specific standard for auto sales and say not within, uh, I'll say 150 feet because that's what we used before of 135, if that's a concern.
If, uh, since, since we recently, um, put these restrictions in on the 135 overlay, can we just specify that the restricted uses that are in the current 135 overlay be put into the new, uh, zoning ordinance? Just make it that simple? Is that?
That would work. Cause I mean, there's a section that's one complete section that's excluded uses. So if you just referenced, whatever that section is, might be the easiest.
Yeah. I know we had a whole list of excluded uses. If we could include that in this new ordinance, that would, I mean, uh, Ms. Coons, would that work?
If that's what you desire, it is your ordinance. So you want to speak to them.
I will, I will make that motion because that's, uh, what I would desire. So.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Hopper to include the excluded uses, uh, that are currently in the 135 overlay as, uh, and make those a part of ordinance 2029.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion on this amendment? Hearing none and roll call on the third amendment to ordinance 2029.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Ordinance 2029 is amended a third time. Anything else from anyone on the council?
I have another question from Mr. Davis. Uh, Dale, you were talking about municipal code and the nuisance items and how that would have to be updated because that, these things are no longer included now that we're giving forward with this ordinance. What is the thought about the timing of that because the, uh, non-compliance goes on and the longer we're in the, the worst thing? Uh, I don't know.
So, uh, I'm sorry, you were breaking up a little bit. Uh, you were asking about the timing of the, of the, uh, municipal code amendments?
Yes.
Uh, I mean, we would move forward as quickly as possible. Uh, we wanted to see what, uh, was passed with this ordinance and that will allow us to, to move forward with that next step. So we could, we could move on that right away.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2029 as, uh, amended the three times, uh, we've amended it this evening.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
William.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine. Hill.
All right. Did Ms. Gibson vote?
Aye.
All right, okay. All right. Ordinance 2029 as amended is passed on a vote of nine to zero. Thank you.
When we return it to the Plan Commission, it is supposed to go with a written statement of the reasons for the amendments. So.
All right. I appreciate that. And once, well, um, could we get a copy of the amended version then sent to us as well?
Yeah, we'll get that to you so that we can put that written statement of reasons together. We can, and we can, Dale and I can forward that to the Plan Commission to place on this agenda when it is available.
All right, Mr. Davis, I want to thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's not been easy. And, uh, I know it included a lot and I know you and your staff put a lot of work into this. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
All right, uh, moving on, first reading ordinance 2025.
An ordinance of the common, the city of Greenwood, Indiana, repealing and reestablishing a merit system for the Greenwood Police Department sponsored by Hill and Williams.
Do I have a motion?
It's a discussion.
All right. Ms. Gibson, did you motion?
I did for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, uh, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. All right. Any discussion? Ordinance 2025.
Mr. President, I'd like to speak.
Yes, Mr. Dine.
I'm not in favor of this ordinance, ordinance, uh, changing the ordinance. As I was on the original committee in 1981, we had to come up with our own ordinance or else fall under a generic merit ordinance. This ordinance was created with business people, with the public and with attorneys and took two years to get in place. Ruckles House at Law Firm in Indianapolis with, uh, involved in police merit commissions approved the changes and everything we made in it originally. This was created to take the politics out of the police department. The city council had two appointees, the merit commission had two appointees, the mayor had one. Red flags started flying on, uh, my point of view is when, uh, Mr. Bates kind of pushed the issue on what this was about, oh, we're going to lose one of our, uh, appointments to the merit commission. Well, it was handed out as, uh, we're just going to clean up some language in it. Then I checked, nobody on the merit commission knew anything about this. Ordinance repeal. Checked with some police officers. They were unaware of any of this. And with us losing one pick, that gives the mayor two. And it shows a balance going away. It may not in theory be happening, but the public perception and with what we have going on in our country today with police officers and police departments under attack, the see, this gives transparency. This gives the public a chance to have their voice heard. Also, it gives the police officer a chance to have his voice heard. Under the new ordinance, it does away with, uh, the chief doing the background on the mayor's appointments for the merit commission. It also eliminates the merit commission from hiring their own independent counsel. They can hire it, but it all has to be approved by the city legal department. It takes away so much of what appears to be fair and tips it going the other way. They've taken out, there's a thing in here that says department qualifications. It says a person can be reappointed if he's a previous employee and all I have to do is show my date of birth or my, uh, birth certificate of when I was born. I'm almost 67 years old. I wouldn't want me out in a police car and I don't have to pass physical agility or anything according to this new ordinance. So there's another one. I understand that they want a lateral transfer. Transfer, I am 100% in favor of a lateral transfer. It can be plugged into this ordinance. It will still give the public a fair voice. It will give the officers a fair voice. And it will take out some of this stuff that looks like it's, uh, completely swaying everything to, uh, back to the political section. And like I say, I played the political game when I came on and it's an ugly game. And if you can take out that part of it and you can give the officers a fair chance and the public a fair chance, you can't ask for anything else. And the people in the merit commission, they have dedicated hours. And by the time this new merit ordinance gets in effect, they want to have it ready to go in January. With the dates and times and places, this thing will be lucky to be in place by March, maybe April. So that, that also creates another problem that they want it because they want it early. But there's just no way with seeing what's going on and the public demanding certain things that we represent. Williams, we look, we represent our voters. But to have a black eye that we gave away the fairness of a system and create a, a cloud over our police department and over the city, I don't want any part of that. So that may be a little, you know, think that's a little too much on my part, but I've lived this police department for 41 years. I was on that committee. I was on the committee to revise it. And it's not perfect, but it's the best thing we got and it's a lot better off than what Marion County, Indianapolis and some of the other areas have. And as far as, you know, picking the, the, the people, it's a pretty fair process. The police officers and the council have their own choices. You know, it takes away that public, even though the one has to be a Democrat and Republican, it takes away ties to things. So I'm going to be quiet now and, uh, while longer, but I just can't go with this because of what it implicates and what it appears to be.
I have a question, Mr. Dine. You said you were on a committee that put the original one together. How, what was the makeup of that committee?
It had, uh, three of us police officers. It had, uh, two attorneys, Phil Wilson and Jim Sargent. It had business people. It had John Gibson from the council. Uh, Larry Woods was chief of police. It had Dave Kepper from the council. It had, uh, public people coming in and we spent months working on that. And we started from the very beginning and in the new ordinance, it, the, the board of works will determine what rank is needed for the, uh, police department, not the police department itself. It also says that the, uh, board will come up with, uh, the physical agility and the evaluations. There's nothing worse than an outside person who does not know anything about a police department telling how to evaluate an officer. That should come from within the police department. Again, I'm getting rolling again, but yeah, there, it, it took in a wide variety of people and it, uh, everybody had a voice and, uh, stayed out of it. And, you know, it was like I say, it was, it was a long, long, a lot amount of hours to get it finalized.
Mr. President, I have a list here of the people that were on there. and they were all on it. John Gibson, Don Harper, Richard Heimy, Norman, Norman Jones, David Kepp, Roy McWhorter and Paul Velez. Then there were four police officers, Taylor Wong, Robert Dine, Will Smith and Larry Wood. And then the two people from the general citizenship with Jim Sargent and R.C. Williams.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on ordinance 2025?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, I just had, uh, questioned, I think that there is quite a bit of concern uh, about the, uh, you know, the formation, uh, and the structure of the ordinance. Uh, the question I have is then how do we go forward? Should we, um, should we defeat this and start it over? Should we amend it, uh, to like it was before? Uh, or is there a third, uh, option to follow?
Well, um, how we vote is left up to each individual. So I can't comment on.
No, I understand that.
We should defeat it, but, um, if it moves, we'll take a vote tonight, I, I assume. And if we do, if it passes, it passes and we move on to a second reading. If it fails, then, um, I, I think it'd be a good idea at that point to form an ad hoc committee to, um, with a couple of council people, a couple of police officers, uh, someone from the city staff, uh, to take a look at this and try to put together something that is acceptable to all of us.
And I will have to say procedurally, you can't amend it. The proposal is to adopt a merit, repeal it and adopt the system that is compliant with 3683.5. 3683.5 has to be adopted as it is. There's only a few things left to discretion such as, hey, do you want to pay a per diem to your parish members or are you suspended? You know, are you going to suspend certain types of pay? We can't make amendments to it. We pretty much have to adopt it per 368.5. And once it's adopted, amendments can be made that you want to tweak. It might be operation specific, but you can't really amend it. You would have to defeat it if you didn't like it.
Okay. Well, that answers that one question.
It's not really defeat. That's what the statute looks at. You'll fail.
We'd fail, we would fail to pass it.
Not favor.
Yeah.
What if we pulled out all the language and just inserted language that said we can take lateral transfers? And that would solve that issue for the time being so that we can hire some police officers.
My point would be, why can't we plug it into the current ordinance? I've been told that's possible.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Get just on the current ordinance we have amended to remove all the language that refers to repeal and replace and just insert language that says our merit system, we can now hire lateral transfers.
Well, typically I say the specific sections that we're actually changing. I haven't pulled the code to do that. I don't have language made for that.
Why don't we?
That's why we have a second reading, Shawna.
I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to vote against this and to try again at the next meeting with the properly crafted language to allow transfers.
My, my only concern is if we voted down, we got to start from scratch, whereas we're on first reading right now. And if we do, you know, if we want to be able to hire lateral transfers so that we can fill some of these empty positions, then starting from scratch wouldn't be the greatest thing ever.
We could try to get it through first reading next time.
Yeah. We could possibly suspend the rules.
I get a little bit nervous when we just say amend it to say this, Shawna, and Shawna is great. I'm not working on jobs when we do that.
We still, we still have one more reading to look it over, Dave.
Yes. Ms. Gibson?
Yes, in ordinance number 9333, uh, the police merit was amended. And one of the whereas is, is that there was, um, an ad hoc committee and it was two councilperson, two merit nation members and four police officers. two merit commission members and four police officers.
Okay, yeah, I was a little concerned this evening when the member of the police, current police merit commission was unaware of this. She said the council didn't inform her, but I was unaware of the ordinance myself until we got it in our packets last meeting, so. All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
I couldn't hear when Shawna was talking. Is it legitimate if this ordinance is defeated? Can we legally plug in the lateral transfer verbiage into the current ordinance? I couldn't hear a word she was saying.
Ms. Coons, is that?
Yes, if you want to take your current merit commission ordinance and make changes and amendments to it, you certainly may do so.
Yes, yeah, we can do that, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments at this point? All right, hearing none, roll call, first reading, ordinance 2025.
Lexi?
Nay.
Pendleton?
Nay.
Williams?
Nay.
Bates?
Nay.
Campbell?
Nay.
Dine?
Gibson?
Nay.
Hill?
Nay.
Hopper?
Oh, definitely nay.
Or, or it's 2029 fails to pass first reading, or it's 2025, I'm sorry. Fails to pass first reading and a vote of zero to nine.
Next step?
Step, do we want to put together a committee to take a look at this, work with the city on this?
Let me, I have a question for Shawna. Shawna, were you saying because of a state statute or something, we have to modify our existing ordinance regarding the merit commission?
No, the proposal in this statute was to repeal what we have and adopt the one that's in accordance with 36835. As Mr. Dine explained, ours is an older ordinance that was kind of passed under a sunset law. So you have to do certain things and comply with the statute. Here we're, we're proposing to comply with that 3683.5 for home fire and police.
Well, are we permitted to still amend an old statute that was allowed under the grandfather rule?
You have an existing merit system and you can amend it, yes.
Okay. And then I don't know, I personally don't know that we need a committee if all of us agree that we should permit transfers and none of us are interested in pursuing the other changes to the system.
Okay, I'm, you know, I'm good with that if that's the will of the council. I think that. I think we can make that change and we've been told we can make that change for the, you know, at our next meeting, so.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Can I make the motion tonight that we get acceptable language first review on using a lateral transfer system that will go to our ordinance or do you want to wait till?
Uh, let's, let's just wait, have Shawna put something together and bring it to us at our next council meeting.
I was going to use next request to see if she would do that for us.
Yes, yeah, Shawna, is that good with you?
I can do it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any further discussion on that?
Why can't we design our own BZA? That's what I want to know.
I have statute on that one.
All right, let's save that for council, Miss Ladys business. All right, ordinance 2026.
An ordinance of the common council, the city of Greenwood, Indiana repealing and reestablishing a merit system for the Greenwood Fire Department sponsored by Hill &amp; Williams.
Do I have a motion?
Still move.
Motion of Ms. Gibson, second. Second, again, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion, ordinance 2026?
Yeah, Mr. President, I haven't looked at this one as closely as I had the previous one. Is there any concern? Do we still have the same amount of representation that the council has received, did receive of the previous one?
I believe the current fire merit board only has three members, is that correct?
As council, you have one appointment and you would have one appointment on the news as well.
And in that time, the mayor had one, we had one and the fire department had one?
The board of public works and safety had one.
Okay.
The council had one and then there was one elected by the members of the fire department.
Okay, so the mayor actually had none.
Right. That's killing, that's.
No, on, I believe in this ordinance, the mayor has two, the fire department members have two and the council has one. But that is, is the same number that we had before.
But it's.
But the board has been increased.
But it's diluted, yeah, our one vote is now diluted.
Yes.
I get it.
So, and if I understand Ms. Coon's previous comments, I'm assuming that we cannot amend this ordinance either, is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
Only after adopted could we make some changes.
Right, so if we adopted it as this, we could amend it later to say, just for an example, to change the appointees and how they're done, is that correct?
Correct, you could make amendments to it after.
Okay.
So those are operation specific, to suit the needs of the fire department.
All right.
And Mr. President, fire chief did tell me that he had discussed this with the existing fire merit group. They have seen.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm on, I'm online.
Yes.
If you have questions for me.
If anybody has a question for Chief Hoggit?
You know, we don't hear a lot about the fire merit board, so I assume it is working swimmingly with the three members as is. What is the, the, why is the change necessary?
So part of the change is adding two other people to the board. So there are five people, a more diverse group, if you will, for the merit board. The way that our merit board was established was, for lack of a better term, piecemealed. And the way that certain things are written in it are legally fuzzy. And, and so I.
Sometimes that's okay, chief.
I need a more clear cut version for us to base our system off of. And, and I will let you know that, that we do have concerns about the way it is written. But as state statute is written, we, you, as a council, you have to approve it before we can amend it. So I can tell you, there are some amendments that we would have to make before the membership, I think, would vote on it favorably. Because the membership does get to vote on it.
All right, thank you, that's good to know. Any other comments or questions at this point on ordinance 2026? All right, hearing none, roll call, ordinance 2026, first reading.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Nay.
Campbell?
Mr. President.
Sorry, Ms. Gibson?
Mr. President, before we start that, I need some.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
I need some clarifications in city legal as to how we need to progress with this, with making our individual roads if we want to be able to make these changes that the chief wants.
Is your question, how, how do we amend it?
Yes.
Okay, under the statute must be adopted. And then in 36835 allows, once it's adopted, you may make amendment or deletions from the provisions you desire to do so. So once this is, if this passes and it's adopted, signed at the mayor's sign, we then can go through, make amendments to address the concerns that the fire department has. And then it can be put to the vote, it will be sent to the active members for referendum. And if they approve it, then it can become effective. So you actually adopt it, but it has a delayed effective date until they have approved it.
We need to make the favor of it and then make the change.
Ken, you, you mentioned amendments that the, that would address concerns of the fire department. I assume we can make amendments that would address concerns of the council as well.
Sure, we, we know, the chief has said there are some, so we know there'll be some coming. If you had additional ones, you could do those.
Okay, thank you. All right, we've already started roll call, I believe, I was the next to vote, I vote aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Ordinance 2026 passes, first reading and a vote of eight to one. Ordinance 2027.
An ordinance to amend Greenwood Common Council ordinance number 0803 amended and Greenwood Municipal Code 1993 as amended chapter two, article three, section two, eleven to change the title of the Department of Community Development Services Department head and to repeal all ordinances inconsistent therewith sponsored by Campbell, Dine, Gibson, Hopper and Williams.
And this is for second reading of ordinance 2027, do I have a motion?
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Hop, Hopper?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, I'm gonna leave Mr. Dine out of this one, I'm sorry, Bob. Uh, it's harder to figure out whose voice it is on this virtual meeting, so.
Yeah, ordinance 20. You run such a tight ship, but, and it hasn't happened in forever, but we've reached that point where we usually get a potty break at, in the, in meetings.
It is nine o'clock, isn't it? Well, let's soldier on for another minute or two, unless somebody really needs to go. All right, ordinance 2027 has a motion and a second. Any discussion, ordinance 2027? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2027, second reading.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine? Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Since Ms. Gibson was a sponsor, I'm going to assume she voted aye, so ordinance 2027 passes, second reading nine to zero. Ordinance 2028.
An ordinance amending the 2020 salary ordinance, common council ordinance number 1928 is amended to change the title of the director and add city engineer position from the Department of Community Development Services sponsored by Campbell, Dine, Gibson, Hopper and Williams.
Do I have a motion?
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion, ordinance 2028? Hearing none and roll call, ordinance 2028, second reading.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine? Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Ordinance 2028 passes, second reading nine to zero. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, resolution 2021.
Resolution of the common council, the city of Greenwood, Indiana identifying the common council as the Greenwood Public Library. Sponsored by Campbell.
All right, do I have any, who wants to address this at this time? This is something required by the state and there's a form that has to be filled out by the library and, and then signed by the fiscal body. And it is attached to the ordinance, so you can see it. And the, or this, or the resolution, and this resolution does authorize the council president to sign on behalf of the council. And there is a request for suspension of the rules through second reading. I believe the purpose and reason for this is that this has to be submitted to the state by October the first and we won't have another meeting until October 5th, is that?
Still move.
Have a motion, most of it, Mr. Bates to suspend the rules through first reading, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, roll call and suspension of the rules through first reading of resolution 2021.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams? Bates?
Aye.
Rules are suspended on resolution 2021 through first reading, voted nine to zero. Do I have a motion on first reading?
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Bates, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on resolution 2021?
Does Cheryl want to say anything about how great her budget is?
She was here earlier, is she still here?
Yeah, she's still here, I think, yeah.
I'm here, no, everything's, everything's awesome, everything's going well.
You're all doing a great job over there.
I don't want to steal your thunder, do you have a presentation or anything? I mean, it is 9:05, so.
Yeah, I know, we had kind of already talked about this before, I just need that signature and I think the council is already aware of the issue, so we're good to go.
All right, thank you. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2021, first reading.
Dine?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye, resolution 2021 passes, first reading nine to zero. Do I have a motion on suspension through second reading?
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexi, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call and suspension of the rules through second reading of resolution 2021.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates? Paul?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Rules are suspended through second reading, do I have a motion on second reading, resolution 2021?
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson, any discussion? Hearing none and roll call, resolution 2021, second reading.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Resolution 2021 passes, second reading nine to zero, thank you everyone, thank you, Ms. Dobbs. I will get that document signed and to you right away. Resolution 2022.
A resolution for appropriations and tax rates for the Greenwood Public Library 2021 budget year sponsored by Campbell.
All right, I don't believe there's anyone to speak to that, so.
Well, I can explain what it's for, great. Under certain circumstances, the title says, the designated physical body which is the resolution is necessary upon review of the library budget. This year, we have to do that because the budget that makes the most keeps the rate portion of the budget. And then, uh, they're going to have kind of a random seller a little bit above what the growth portion is. So this year, you actually have to do that binding on your budget, probably won't happen here, but this is going to happen, so.
All right, all right, Ms. Dobbs, any comments?
No, that about covers it.
Okay, thank you. All right, ordinance 2030.
An ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2021 budget year sponsored by Bates.
Ordinance 2031.
An ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Greenwood, Indiana and city utilities for the year 2021.
Ordinance 2023, or 2032.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the mayor of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year 2021.
Ordinance 2033.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the clerk of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year 2021, sponsored by.
Ordinance 2034.
Ordinance number 2034, an ordinance fixing the salary of the judge of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year 2021, sponsored by Bates.
Ordinance 2035.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the common council of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year 2021, sponsored by Bates.
And just to comment, all these salary ordinances for elected officials are, are the same as they were last year. Same for the mayor, the clerk, the judge and the council. We were told last week about the, our last meeting, that some of the, most of the city budget is frozen, but some, there are some changes to some salaries, so. All right, ordinance 2036.
An ordinance of the city of Greenwood, Indiana authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain local road and street system projects and incident. projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith, and on account of the issuance of the bonds appropriating the proceeds thereof and all matters related thereto, sponsored by Bates.
Right, anyone wish to talk about this one?
Yes, Greg Wright, uh, controller for the city.
Yes.
So this one, as we discussed last time, our, our tax rate, um, is going to have some additional capacity if we want to keep it level, um, to, to take on some bonds, um, and if we lose that tax rate, then we also lose the, um, auto excise, the commercial vehicle excise, uh, the financial institutions tax, and the local income tax that are all dependent upon our percentage of property taxes versus the rest of the county. So that's one reason we want to try and keep our rates level, keep those, uh, tax dollars level, so that we don't lose any of those other dollars. Um, this would be approximately five point two five million, or five point five two five million, um, the, the vast majority of which would go to road paving projects. Um, we are also, uh, requesting, uh, to add in the ability to use part of it for, um, the Worsville Road Park project that's coming up. Part of the reasoning on this is we expect we may need to issue bonds on that next year when some of the other bonds roll off, but with all the uncertainty, if we use this one, um, use part of this one towards it, then what we need next year would be lower, and we could potentially do more paving next year with something that's available, but if it's not there, then we've still got, uh, the park project covered. So that's, um, part of what we're looking at, at, at with this one as well. So it'd be, uh, approximately two million going to the park project, and three point five two five going to paving, uh, and next year.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wright at this time? All right, moving on miscellaneous business, uh, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are not on the agenda. So if you're here, would like to do that, again, there are time limits, five minutes for an individual, twenty minutes for a group, so, uh, if you would like to speak to the council, uh, speak up, state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, moving on to any miscellaneous business from the council? Hearing none, moving on to corporation council?
There's none.
Oh, and I bet the controller has something to say right now.
Unfortunately, I'm gonna drag your night out a little bit longer this evening.
All right.
I'm gonna start up sharing my screen here. Are you able to see the PowerPoint on your screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this is our, our second night of budget presentations. Um, I really want to talk about capital first. We'll summarize the second half of the department budgets with the department heads on, on, uh, the call here tonight to answer any questions you may have, uh, and just go over some of the key changes. Um, I did send along, uh, some work papers, citizens' budget, and, um, summaries for everybody. If you have any questions at any time, just feel free to give me a call or send me an email. I'm happy to answer. Um, starting out with the capital budgeting, uh, really, this for us means all long-lived assets in excess of five thousand dollars. Um, what you will see as we go into this is some of our capital that we're planning on purchasing is going to be paid for through lease purchase programs, so some of those dollars are budgeted under, um, ex- under our, um, operating budget, but will contribute to our overall capital at the end. So what you see here is what's budgeted for operating versus what's budgeted for paying for capital, cash out of hand. Um, so you can see here on the left that our utilities make up approximately thirty-nine percent of the total spending budget, uh, for operating. Uh, that is all funded via user fees. Everything and the rest of this is funded primarily through taxes. There are some user fees, but for the most part, it is, uh, tax funding, um, and public safety is the biggest piece, followed by the, the general admin of the city. What you see here is the spending that will actually, um, result in, in capital. So we have total of nine point one million in planned investments. Some of that's gonna be paid over multiple years with leases. Some of it'll be paid directly out of cash. Um, the biggest proportion's going to infrastructure projects. Generally, that means roads, that means pipes in the ground. Um, quality of life generally refers to parks-type projects, and then we've got public safety, obviously, um, police and fire, and then the operational excellence refers to just operations of the city and trying to create efficiencies within the city. But here's some of the highlights as to what's falling within those categories. Um, we do have our twelve new police patrol units. That is, um, just based on our rotation. We try to do twelve per year. We have a four-year lease on them, but we replace them every five years, so we do get a little extra time on them. And then, um, from there, you can see quality of life. We talked about the Worsville Road Park. Um, there is also the Fry Road Hampton Hall and, um, just equipment in general for the parks. As far as the operational excellence goes, uh, the general fleet pretty much covers that, also the maintenance shop, and then infrastructure, as we discussed, road improvements, paving, uh, this is the airport hangar, uh, and, and some machinery and equipment purchases, um, for that as well. This is the order I'll go through this evening on the departmental budgets. Um, I want to stop here. Are there any questions before I move forward? Okay. For the mayor's office budget, we had one change. There was a decrease to the mayor's youth council line item. Um, it's now funded via sponsorship, a donation from Franciscan Health, so that's no longer needed to be paid for from the general fund. And you can see just that, that slight decline there. For the council, there are no changes proposed, so this keeps the funding for, um, the, the social, keeps the funding for, um, Johnson County Senior Services, for the, the community band, all those that we, we increased last year. We're gonna keep that level of funding. The fire department. We do have an increase in the part-time per hour pay from fourteen dollars an hour to sixteen dollars an hour. A big part of this is the need to retain our part-time firefighters. Um, when they come on and get trained with us, they can go elsewhere and make at least sixteen. Um, in fact, they could go just across one thirty-five and make, I believe it's sixteen seventy-five. So we're just trying to get in line with what others are doing, so that we don't lose those good firefighters. Um, we do have an increase to the fuel based on their current usage, um, pump and ladder testing, generator maintenance, property and liability insurance, and car wash passes. Um, the one thing that dropped is they did have a lease in there, uh, for about seventy-nine thousand that rolled off, so you'll see that on the next screen. And then we moved the tire replacement and repair from the supply line to the services and charges line. The reason for this being that, um, our shop doesn't do the actual replacements. When they buy the tires, the service to put them on is part of the whole deal, so, um, in the accounting world, that, that falls more under service and charge than under supplies. And so you can see here, we do have some increase in supplies. That's the fuel, and decrease in the services and charges. That's where we had that roll off. And then the slight increase here is due to, uh, increasing that part-time wage. Parks Department? So as you'll recall, uh, late last year, the council passed the food and beverage tax. One of the main things that the states, uh, allowed us to do with that was to fund parks and recreation. So what we've done is to split the parks and recreation budget over the park and recreation fund, which is a property tax-funded fund. It's gonna have their personal services and their capital outlays, and then the food and beverage tax fund, where we'll have supplies and services and charges. Um, part of the driving force for the increases in this year's budget is the fieldhouse. We expect it will open in the latter part of next year, which means staffing, training, marketing, utilities, all the things that go along with bringing that online. So that's why you will see some increases to the parks where other places have flatlined. Um, we do have an increase to the gasoline usage based on current numbers. Uh, there's a need for new life jackets out of Freedom Springs, uh, and for increased staff clothing. Part of this is coming out of COVID, the need for more lifeguards, more staff out there to keep everything, um, under the, the rules for cleaning and everything, so that's part of that. Um, some of the other drivers, you'll see, uh, parks maintenance is gonna be in the new DPW building, so they will be paying, uh, some rent and CAM charges towards the, uh, funding of that building. And then with the addition of the food and beverage tax, we are having the parks department take on paying for one hundred percent of their health insurance for their full-time employees. And then, um, we do have some large projects at Freedom Springs. We have a slide restoration, and then, um, we do have a three-year contract for painting the interiors of the pools. Uh, this year is the big pool, so it's the larger number on the three-year contract, so you see a slight increase on that line item. And that's what you'll see here on, on this. Like I said, um, a big piece of it is just bringing on that, uh, that fieldhouse. Um, are there any questions on that one? I know there's quite a bit going on there.
Greg, I don't have any questions on that, but do you have preliminary numbers on how the pool did with the short season and limited capacity?
Um, they were limited in capacity, and, um, they weren't even hitting that number. Um, I don't have the final pool numbers. Uh, I'll probably get those through the parks department here in the next week or two, so I can just include that when I sort out financials.
All right, thank you.
So under fleet maintenance, biggest driver here, uh, it's gonna be moving into the new DPW building, so contributing to the cost for that building. Um, and then there are some, some tanks for oxygen, acetylene, and argon that are gonna be over there. Uh, they do have to pay a rental fee for the tanks themselves. And that's, that's basically, that other services and charges number is almost entirely rent and CAM charges for DPW. The street department? Um, did try this year to split out the costs of, uh, finance department staff and the HR director, because they do all work for all the different departments that have separate funding, so we're trying to split that out more equitably. Um, they, the street department does pay one hundred percent of their health insurance from their NVH fund. Uh, it does include their rent at the DPW building. As we talked about with the capital leases, uh, we're looking at doing a lease for two dump trucks and one mowing tractor. Um, that will be paid over seven years, um, but that number is included in that nine point one million we discussed. So we've got the annual bit overlay, um, that's our, our normal paving project. Um, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand comes from NVH. The rest comes from the LRS fund, so that, that would be in addition to the three point five that we discussed with the bonds paving wise. We've got quite a bit of paving that'll be done this year. LRS, we moved some supplies around between NVH and LRS just to balance it, uh, added funded for street signs. And there's that one. Community Development Services. Um, there's, there was a part-time planner, uh, position that was added in twenty twenty, so that's new on the budget for twenty-one. Uh, we did split out some of the shared costs for, uh, project manager, the staff engineer that are doing, um, work for some of the utilities. We do have an increase for gasoline again, um, and for their uniforms, because we did add a person. Um, there was a service decrease due to removal of updating the asset management plan. Uh, you'll see it come back next year, but we also, uh, did add in an update to city standards. I think part of that will help fund what Dale was discussing in the, uh, in the conversation on the zoning and some of those municipal code updates. The cumulative capital funds, um, one of the big ones in this one is increasing our ADA compliance, um, line item. That allows us to put in ramps where needed, to put in ha- um, handrails, whatever it is that we need to do to be in compliance with the ADA re- um, requirements. We've increased the funding for that to make sure that we're able to, uh, get as much done as possible in a year. Uh, we do have the rental payments on the new fire station. Uh, we did increase the traffic signal maintenance just based on the current numbers that we're, we're spending. Um, and then we have some software maintenance agreements, um, that are based primarily on the number of users, and so that's why that one's gone up some. Uh, you see the north hangar there, and then we do have the, the flex budgeting. Um, that's one of those just-in-case lines for us in the machinery and equipment. There's that one. Um, the cigarette tax cumulative capital fund, that one, uh, the overall remains the same. Uh, it's split between, um, the capital and the services and charges lines, and there is a, a chunk in there for shop equipment for the fleet maintenance department. Can you see that there? And then the cumulative capital rate fund, um, we do have some IT costs in there. We've got, uh, desktop leases, laptop leases, uh, those police vehicles we discussed earlier, um, the, the grant match for the Main and Metaview Roundabout Construction Inspection. So the twenty twenty, we've, we had it budgeted for the actual construction. We'll pay that to, um, to the state, and then the inspection will happen next year, and we'll pay that. Um, and then funding for reimbursement to sanitation and stormwater. So the sanitation, um, budget purchased the VFW building last year, but the city is using it for storage of, um, city files and things like that, so, uh, we looked at it as being kind of a fairness thing to reimburse them for that, since they won't be utilizing that piece of property. Uh, with stormwater moving into the new DPW building, we anticipate that the city will also utilize their property over there for some storage in that, um, that building, so we would be purchasing it from them as well. And that's what you see reflected here. So that capital outlay change, that's basically the change in cost from, um, construction match to inspection match. Clerk's office proposed no changes in this year's budget. Clerk's record perpetuation, no changes. Court and probation budget. Uh, the court budget did have an increase for personal protective equipment supplies. Uh, big part of that is just coming out of the COVID-nineteen stuff, making sure that their budget has capacity. Um, and then they decreased the postage and mileage and continuing to add based on their current spending. You see that reflected here with a slight increase. Adult probation, there are two positions there that are state-mandated, uh, wages. So there was a slight increase to probation officer one and felony case manager salaries, and then the taxes, per, et cetera, that go along with those people. Uh, we did remove funding for field officer position, um, which not currently needed to be in there, um, and a reduction on the recovery coach program line item, and then adding funding for upgrading iPads. And you see that reflected here. So a slight decrease in the overall budget for probation. So as I said, I sent out the citizens' budget. Um, there's the, the department summaries, the line item detail budgets. Um, you've got your, your salary ordinances, capital budgets and work papers together. Um, any, any questions, feel free to give me a call. I'm happy to walk through any of them. I know there's a lot of numbers and a lot of stuff going on, so if you have something you're concerned about, I'm happy to address it.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wright at this time? All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. All right, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
All right, last thing on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, if you're still here, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
All right, then uh I haven't had a two and a half hour meeting in a long time, so gentlemen, I apologize, ladies and gentlemen, I apologize, but we are adjourned. Good night.
Night.
Thank you, have a good week.
Thank you too.